Morning.
It's just right.
I thought Colette took care of everybody.
Seven or muted stuff.
I don't think we need a part in that. Well, it has everybody.
Yeah.
I think Plain City, Far West and Hurstville all get together.
Thanks, Ben.
One of them do a really good. I think she does.
They they like.
We did.
That's why we can spare.
Well, Felix said.
And let anybody over there.
There goes our first.
And we go off.
Well. We need some amenities of our own as well.
Thank you.
They could use some some hints, Jeff.
Sure got cheese, but there's like.
All right, you guys ready? All right, we'll go ahead and get our pre-meeting going. First item we got, it's gonna be Navy Meadows Felix.
Yes, public hearing without that. They've got they know they need little changes, kind of like what we talked about last work session. Um, we we took this proposal before the county commission and they wanted to see some changes, so we got implemented those. So we're we're feeling pretty good about this. Hopefully there'll be some sort of support with electric commissioners and.
You got your patio homes in there.
Yeah.
Should win one over.
Yeah. Yeah.
And oh my god.
And it's also the the adjustment also reduced their their number of units, so. Really working with just the R one fifteen as far as Benson goes will look just fine with this plan, so. There's no request to amend the general plan and there's no re- no request to expand the R three uh zone in a certain extent, so. I should be the kind of what we have here on today.
Yeah.
Well, that's. All right.
So can you just show us the the changes Felix?
Yeah, sure.
Just keep it simple and I I was assuming we can do that in our other meeting as well, right?
No.
We have to present the entire thing all over like every little detail.
No.
Okay. Good.
Cause it's it's.
Yes.
Because it's still changing the zone, but now it's changing the zone without the R three side of it, so it's it meets the general plan, it's. Pretty much straightforward.
Yeah.
So I'm just gonna open up the. You see one of these things.
Did Martha order this?
No, have you met um or you met Tiffany, haven't you?
Yes.
Okay, um Crystalin's the new June and um she's one that ordered it.
Who's the new June?
So Crystalin de Breeze.
De Breeze.
De Breeze, yeah, and um she does all the stuff pretty much that June did and.
She likes chicken, that's just why, man.
That's true. It's okay, she does some of it too, you're right.
Homingled.
You get us though.
I get you.
Luckily.
Yep.
You get the Ogden Valley?
No, not yet, not yet.
Fight that.
I have a feeling it's coming.
They're gonna they're gonna hold her off on that.
They're gonna make sure that I want to say first, yeah, exactly.
Get her used to us.
Do you get used to us? Is that possible?
tolerate us.
Is that better?
We're the easy ones.
We're easy, but. We uh.
That's what the director said.
I'm gonna be quiet since we're.
Yeah, I already.
We've already got him on record saying how amazing we are.
That's true. Yeah, that's right, in our last meeting.
You do.
I will say that was pretty. It shows. Hopefully the men ups, the three upstairs agree.
All right.
Maybe. So the new plan is this. So you still have. I'm not gonna remember from last time, but we we wanted to see some bridges, so that's planned in there, also additional connections out here. And what they did is this this used to be townhouses around. So they changed these to patio home lots and then they they basically reduced the number of townhome units. We still post people in this plan.
That's a good buffer, yeah.
But we've also got those density calculations that are up kind of picture though. Uh we'll notice that the density does say two twelve um with the R with the fifteen thousand square foot. Uh basically two twelve is kind of a cap with that oh that fifteen thousand square foot density and their plan shows two fourteen. But it's anticipated that when they actually go to draw the subdivision plan, there's gonna be some space needed for detention basin areas and so. It will it won't exceed the two twelve.
On the patio homes, when they were townhomes, we were backloading them with a driveway on the backside to keep. Back off of thirty nine hundred west. I'm not sure what those dotted lines mean, I think it's pathway, but I don't know. So are they are the are the drivers gonna face that road now?
You mean like along this this here?
Yeah, to the right.
So the our 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 what our plan is is to really minimize the number of access points along that. If if we if we do that, we can have a nice uh path without directions. So I think ideally what we would do is the subdivision target show access from maybe this side or even an alleyway access for these lots. And then same thing here, we would want some type of access, maybe even an access through here. For to provide voltage or access for these lots here.
So are you gonna have that discussed in the development agreement?
Yes. Already written.
Oh, okay.
So no changes from last time.
So even though the map doesn't show it, you were just gonna include that in the new issue, okay.
So Charlie, since you dogged us the other day. On this note.
What you done?
You ditched us the other day.
Oh, sorry.
Um thirty nine hundred. Now, is that a, I thought that was an eighty foot right away, bro.
I do believe we're gonna ask for eighty, this show less.
No, it just showed sixty six.
Sixty six and the general plan does show sixty six. Oh, does, okay, yes, so it's not an eighty. So it's more like sixteen hours south, kinda. Set up.
My only comment to that is is I I almost think the other road would fit better tying in to the north. Than that one.
You mean what?
Just.
You mean this road?
Yes, just when you look at how it lines up with the stuff to the north. That road's gonna line up more to what's coming out of that Anderson subdivision, more so than that other stuff. Just looking at it on the large scale, but then we can address that at subdivision, I know that that's not like a hang up for me, but just. When you look at tying all that together. In the grand scheme there, you you line up better that way. But. Any questions on this one? I think we beat this one to death in past meetings.
I'd say if we were happy with it before to approve it, we shouldn't have any issues now, right? I mean, it just was.
And we recommend it even with the R three change, so. But.
Tell them no changes.
Just put your back.
We're on good graces with them right now, we don't wanna.
Well, let's keep a good, we don't wanna start being like that other one.
Now, help me understand. All right, if nothing else on Navy. Um, we got a couple work session items. The J D C Ranch items pulled from our agenda, so we won't have that as work session three. And then we can discuss. The general plan amendment. For a land use near the future interchange of the West Weaver corridor. And I think that ties in with West Creek State, so.
I think they're the same thing, yeah, I think the applicant submitted an application, but also in work session request, which when you submit an application, we try and get it up. But part of the list of separately is just in case, so we didn't get to find out we had two different things.
All right. Everybody got anything else? If not, we can chill for fifteen minutes and go to the other room. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone out to the Western Weaver Planning Commission meeting, today is mm Tuesday, May fourteenth. Um, go ahead and let the record show that all planning commission members are in attendance except for Commissioner Whitton and we'll excuse her from tonight's meeting. First off, if y'all wouldn't mind standing and saying the pledge with me. All right, thank you for that. We're gonna go ahead and start off with a legislative item, this is gonna be item two point one Z M A two zero two three dash zero eight. This will be a public hearing for consideration on our request to rezone seventy two point seven five acres. From the A two to the R one fifteen to the development known as Navy Meadows located approximately four thousand west, thirty three hundred south, Director.
So we had a public hearing on this a few months ago, you um forwarded a recommendation on this um to the county commission. As they reviewed this, um they wanted to send it back to you with some changes, so the developers worked with um the county commission on a few things and so we've renoticed it again. And Mr. La Barino is gonna be presenting, um once you um listen to his narrative. You'll open and close a public hearing with a motion and then you'll forward on a recommendation.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, thank you, good evening Commissioners. So what we have here is a a request to rezone and this is a legislative action and so. Um, the the applicant, Mr. Doug Hamblin is with us in the audience today and he's he's looking for a positive recommendation to go to the planning commission. And so the the plan that the the most recent plan that we have to present to you tonight is um is occupying this property in red. And the proposal would rezone from A two to R one fifteen. And here is the most recent proposal, uh you can see the. Um, the density calculations there where you have the two hundred and twelve lots. Uh for that fifteen thousand square foot density and that's what the R one fifteen is designed for is that and. And you you'll also notice the the app the uh the this concept plan before you is uh displays. Uh roadway connectivity as well as pathway connectivity and some park spaces. And. There's something unique about this property that I'd like to highlight is the this the townhouses there on the south. Inside and those those will be developed under the R one fifteen site development standards and. The. Let's see here, as well as the the patio homes surrounding the the townhomes. And uh what we've what we've proposed to do is writ- write into the development agreement. And. Those basically the caps on the density. So that aligns well with that R one fifteen site development standards as well as uh caps on the number of. Patio homes that are five thousand square feet. And also a cap on the number of townhouse units, you can see there you have that forty seven. And. In the development agreement, there's also there will also be. A statement restricting access onto thirty nine hundred west. The intention of that restriction would be to um that pathway that runs straight northward on thirty nine hundred west would. Would remain uninterrupted for pedestrians and. And cyclists. And uh this proposal that you're you're I think you're all pretty well familiar with this proposal at this point. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. It with this proposal you have and um we can we can definitely get get those questions answered and um. Let's see here. I'm just curious if there's anything else that I. Like to share. What I'll do is I'll go on to the model motions. And so the the staff has prepared in the report some model motions that that should help you kind of form a motion. And we've we've written those things out, there's the motion as is. And there's to mo- the a motion with changes. Um, the the motion that we have listed here with changes. And it it actually has. Uh nine standards written in, there will be more standards written into the development agreement. And I would imagine more standards would be added once we get to the county commission and once we um. Once we, once county staff has an opportunity to to refine some of those standards. That would uh help to shape this development. And then your your other motion is the motion to table. And then then the last motion there is motion to recommend denial. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for staff at this point? Okay, thanks Felix. All right. I will. Guys ready to open a public hearing? Want to discuss anything first, okay, I'll accept a motion to open a public hearing.
Chair, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
In a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, we're now in public hearing, anybody wishes to speak on this item? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, it's Val Sanders, thirty eight eighty nine west, twenty nine hundred south, I live in Taylor. I own the property that's just uh north of this, I've got two or three cards showing. Uh what's gonna be proposed, what's gonna be there, uh I talked with Hamblin today, it's actually an HOA. I love the fact that it's an HOA because it's self governed. What I mean by self governed, that means that if there's code infractions, people not obeying the rules of the neighborhood, it's dealt with swift and. Quickly. If there's an eighteen wheeler pose in front of your house, within five minutes, it's towed away. Weaver County, you can sit there for three or four days and not have it towed away. I give you another example of why I think the townhomes and the uh. Uh patio homes are a good way to go, the reason they're a good way to go is because if you take the north part of that property. From, I live on the north end of there, you take from twenty nine hundred to say twenty seven fifty in Anderson West subdivision. There is thirty to sixty code violations in that neighborhood alone, generated by three or four people mostly. If you go to from twenty seven fifty up to uh twenty five fifty, there's another twenty five or thirty. So you're looking at between fifty and a hundred junk cars. Let let me give you an explanation, next door to me, eight to ten hundred registered vehicles, two or three dump trucks across the street. Three eighteen wheelers. Four companies running off that guy's property. Uh or that's what it appears, cause there's always four different trucks, they are loading and unloading stuff in there. Uh you drive up the street, uh I talked to Rick about this earlier, twenty years ago I was subpoenaed to go to court for a guy that started a business in his backyard, twenty years ago. Today, I can count twenty five, thirty code violations, he has three junk dump trucks, one was in his front yard. I was told they made progress because he drug it out of his front yard and moved it to the side of his house. That's not accomplishments. Uh his son and nephew have a trucking company registered to that property or they did at one time, there's two or three different other trucking company names that keep appearing in that driveway. There's just digging it, uh two or three hundred, I can't remember the names on the deal, so basically. Uh you get a subdivision like this coming in, it's pretty bulletproof, you're not gonna have the junk. So if you take that seventy acres down there, there's potentially gonna have zero code. Problems with it, then you take fifteen homes that have up to sixty code violations, move up, so you take from twenty nine hundred to thirty three hundred. Right now, there's eight to ten code violations all by one person across the street, eight to ten by another one. The guy across the street over here has three or four junk cars in his backyard, the guy next to him has a construction company, the way he does siding. The guy across the street from him has a landscape business and he's a school teacher, so he has this landscape slash. Snow removal business, then you move up to the street to talk about the Dean Anderson I'm referring to that has twenty or thirty code violations, so. In that subdivision loan, it seems to me to be ridiculous, I held thousands of uh pound of townhomes and patio homes, I own a garbage company. And you drive through those and they are spotless, they're clean, they're nice, not any issues. Because it's set forth and you don't have to wait for the county to do anything. I own townhomes, if somebody was to pull a junk car in there. It's not registered, I'd have it towed out as fast as I could tow truck there. County, past experiences, twenty years, still there. In fact, there's an ABC coal truck, dump truck that's been parked in my house for twenty three years now, it's never been moved. So with that being said. I recommend places like this, it's foolproof. It it eliminates the possibility of people getting away with murder for twenty years. If that makes sense to you, and don't just take my word for it, Google Anderson West subdivisions. And take it from there up to twenty five fifty and see. Today, and they just did a new one, I think, last year, see how many is there compared to twenty years ago. Your own records department will show twenty years ago, there was nothing around my house, no businesses, no nothing. Look at what it looks like today on your own pictures that you guys take every year, you'll be surprised. And I'm not influenced or I have nothing to do with him, I'm not a partner of that stuff, I'm just here because I'm kinda liking to see. I'd rather see two hundred homes than five trucking companies next to my house between eleven and three o'clock, five o'clock, four o'clock. For an example, what happens in my neighborhood and uh their code enforcement will have to attest. They have trucking companies that work morning, noon and night, seven days a week. Some reason, we can't get that stopped. I would love it to stop, but it won't, so that being said, I'd rather have three hundred homes behind me than twenty five with sixty and seventy code violations. And that's not even exaggeration, that's fact. Welcome to Drive My Neighborhood, check it out and see, come by my house at ten eleven o'clock, watch the uh truck. And I bet none of you here have had an eighteen wheeler drive through your fence, run over your driveway and drive up to the side of your house. And that was Dean Anderson, by the way, the guy that owns thirty forty problems up the street from me, and then jump in his truck and drive away and leave. So there you have it, sorry to to tell you guys all that, but I had to get it off my chest, but compared to this, like I said before, redundant. I have a garbage company, I held thousands of townhomes, patio homes, they're all immaculate, drive up and down twenty five fifty, pick anywhere you wanna go. And you won't see the junk that you see in my neighborhood. A junk, people have junk people come, like the last guy that just moved the neighborhood, two or three. The guy that just bought the house up the street on twenty five fifty, he's adding on to his building, I didn't know how you can add on to a building when you have twenty five junk vehicles behind your house. But he's adding on already, but my time's probably up, thank you guys for listening to me, hopefully you guys will prove more things like this because. Drive around, look at them, they are immaculate, they are nice, they're well taken care of, they're self governed, no headaches to the community, no headaches to nobody except for people with them. And honestly, two people for code enforcement for the size of Weaver County, it's probably not enough, to be honest with you, but. That is what it is, I can't change that, alls I can do is hope that the future. They they keep doing stuff like this guy wants to do. Thank you guys for your time, I probably went over three.
You're good, thanks Val.
Thank you, you guys have fun.
Steve Cox, uh thirty three sixty six west eight uh sixteen eighty. North in Clinton, Utah, representing the Hadley family whose property borders the the subdivision and and I just want to um. Reach out to the planning commission and the commissioners and say thank you for uh listening to the people who are concerned about the R three zoning and going through that process and. And really understanding what uh the true uh area of of the country is, or what we like to call the country anyway. Um, you know, and and not uh uh and not building those great big tall uh tall buildings up there and and having such dense housing up there, so you know, it's appreciated that they listened and. And took that into consideration and uh the Hammond uh investment group there for making the changes necessary, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Come on, power in a public hearing, you don't wanna say nothing, I'm just kidding. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing, motion. Wait a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're at a public hearing. Any questions or discussions, we've got staff and the developer, anything else, I know this is. All right, then if you guys are ready, I'm ready to accept a motion on this item. Unless you wanna say something, Miss. All right. I might make it to the kids rodeo after all.
Chair, I'll offer up a motion uh for with the uh model motion as stated with changes. Um, I don't know if you will, Liam, is it okay to to just reference it from tonight's uh report?
Yeah, if you reference it with particularity to the number on the.
Okay.
Nine conditions.
All right, um so my motion is for uh a positive recommendation to the commission. Um, based on the model motion uh for a positive recommendation with changes as listed in our uh report for this item. In tonight, for tonight's meeting.
We need to state the item.
Based on your findings?
Based on my findings, of what?
Are you including your findings in there?
The oh, the proposal to implement, is that what you're talking about? The proposal to implement certain goals and policies of the the West Central Weaver general plan. Two, the development is not determined, excuse me detrimental to the overall health, safety and welfare of the community.
All right, I got a motion, we got a second. A motion, a second, any discussion on the motion?
Do we need to add, I know it's the only item on the agenda, but do we need to add the number, number to it? Think that was mentioned and. Sorry to be nitpicky.
Do we need that, Liam?
It's always good to have the item number, but.
So how do we undo what we've done?
I think you can still do it, you just add.
To amend your motion. I'll amend the motion to add uh the identification for tonight's meeting on the agenda page, legislative item two point one Z M A twenty twenty three dash oh eight.
Mr. Angiotti, you still good with the second on that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, any further discussion?
One quick question, does that, does that cover the items that um Felix discussed as far as going into the? The DA.
Yes, it's the nine.
Yes, okay.
It'll be the nine.
Okay.
Conditions listed. Within there.
Cool, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Commissioner McCormick. Commissioner Angiotti. Mr. Vero, aye. Commissioner Novell.
Aye.
Mr. Clance.
Aye.
Chair, both of you, that passes, okay. Thank you. Next item, public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. Okay. Remarks from planning commissioners.
I'll I'll take a swing at that one. You know. Um, we had, our meeting was it last Monday with the commission?
Yep.
A week ago and um I know that that there was a lot of um. Good that came that came with all of us, our participation in that meeting, I just wanted to say that I was really happy to see our group. Show up like they did and take action on something that's very important and that it's recognized how important that it is, so thank you all for that.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
I agree with um Commissioner Favaro, I think that's a good thing, I'd like to see that on our schedule a little more often than the, I don't know how, it's a one time and. The, I don't know how, it's a one time in the three years I've been here. Or two and a half. I think it's a good idea. It it's good for us to brainstorm with the commissioners and to let them see who we are and what we're about.
We've invited lots of times. We just don't always get it.
We've invited ourselves, is that?
No.
We've been invited.
We've asked several times, hey, we want the commissioners to have a work session with them.
But we have invited ourselves. I see, okay.
Sometimes you just gotta storm the room.
Right, there you go. Good.
Just kidding.
We'll just keep putting that little bug in the ear.
Yep. I I agree one hundred percent. Okay, anything else? Director Grover?
The county commissioners also expressed their appreciation. So I think we'll probably have a few more of those in the near future. So uh, it was very productive. Thank you.
Was a very good meeting. Since we don't know this guy sitting next to his name, we'll just call him that weird legal guy over there. Alright. With that, we'll adjourn to the work session. If you guys were good, we can go back in there, can't we? There'll be, I see Pat's got map, so it might be easier.
Well, I was actually gonna stand up and say something there in a public hearing. Now, before I do want to say. As some of you know, I do. I meet a lot of planning commissioners, and this is not just. Pissing up or anything like that. I really forget sometimes how appreciative it's to come to Weaver County and their planning commission because. It's professionally run, it's run well. I deal with some.
I'm not that professional. Don't get me started again. I'm just kidding.
I meant me.
I know. That legal guy over at the corner. We don't know his name today. Someone stole his name badge.
But no, seriously, I have to deal with some planning commissioners. I mean, I have to teach them what planning even the word. Anyway, so I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate coming back for.
You need one of these down.
Thank you. Now you buttered us up.
I hope you wanna sell us all up here, right?
So this is um. Called West Creek Estate. You guys have seen it. You voted on for the zone change. Uh, to R one fifteen, went ahead and got that. So I took over this project literally two days before it came in to, for the rezone, but I kept it on the rezone. Just because it was already on there and and I had to meet with the commissioners. To get their feelings on what they thought of me coming into rezoning anyway. So this is the uh, this is what I showed the commissioner when I said, hey, this is what's going on. The. The red straight lines, that's the property. Obviously, you guys know the M and T zone right there. You guys got approved. And that's already done and rezoned. And they redid the master plan for that. And then this is where the Davis Weaver corridor. Is coming in and hitting Twelfth Street. So what I was telling the commissioners is, look. Um, this isn't a good place for R one fifteen zone. And uh. All three of them agreed. And you know, I know they've been hesitant on reamending the master plan. So that's what I wanted to show them was. This is why I think it should be amended is along, you know, I I know this is nitri, but everybody calls it, along Twelfth Street. It should have. Better. Stuff. And so what they're actually wanting me to do is help propose a Twelfth Street overlay. Just, that's what the commissioners have kinda said, well, Pat, let's maybe do like a Twelfth Street overlay. And start working on something like that. I've kinda worked with Charlie. He's very smooth with Twelfth Street overlay. I brought that in from Ogden. And looking at. I don't wanna speak for him, I'm just saying, looking at working with Charlie to propose something like that. But what I'm here today is to talk about coming in here and rezoning. First of all, I wanna rezone this piece, just the piece that I have right here, and I'll show you what it is rezoning to. But I'm actually saying. Proposing we rezone up to. Sixty-seven hundred west, the three parcels. Right along on this side. And I wouldn't be opposed to doing these parcels on the west, just cuz that's planning, in my opinion, it should happen that way. But. I'm not necessarily proposing that. I will, if that's what you guys would like me to do.
Who's already?
This is the uh. Kelly Penrod. This is uh. Carefree, some of the, I can't remember her name, talking. I can't remember. I've not actually talked to her yet, no. Um, I've been talking with Kelly Penrod and I've, um, Blair Penrod. Couple of other people own some of these, these other parcels here. Um. I have talked with Black Pine, who owns three hundred and eighty-five acres, obviously, right next to it. They're in, they're in agreement with me. They they with support of rezone here. Um, the. Commissioners asked me to come back with you guys and get what their, what your feeling was on rezoning this. Um. Uh, Sharon and Gage are in support of it, and Harvey was not against it. I'll just leave it at that. You guys understand what I mean. So um. But they wanted me to come back and get your feedback. And they did give you permission to tell you they were okay with it, but obviously wanted to, you know, hear what the guys had to say about it. Um.
What do you wanna rezone it to?
Just R three.
Straight R three.
Straight R three.
Kind of a loophole, general plan map.
Sure will.
This is the general plan.
No, this is what the existing zoning is.
Correct.
Not what the future land use meant, or the general plan shows in this area. I am very much against this because when you look at the general plan and you look at what all of this area on this side of the tracks is. We have a ton of R three, mixed use. Everything over here, the the whole news, basically, when the general plan was done, this whole area over here kinda created that new city center. Um. I I'm hesitant to change anything just on the basis of this corridor going through. This was. Oh. Alright, that's Charlie whispering to me. Shut up. Um, until UDOT officially starts an environmental assessment on the area and picks a corridor. This is just a line on a map, just like we've done in the past. I mean, I know in conversations with the commission and even when we went through the general plan this. Discussions, this road should be further west. Um. Depends on who gets the enough poll to see if they move it further west, but. I I'm against changing anything just in relation to this line on the map until we have a corridor through there, especially knowing. What the general plan's already calling for over here. And so that's my two cents on this.
So we have the vision that you got, and you guys all know, I'm part of this West Bridge project right here. So this is where we're. We're actually setting aside two hundred feet for you to come through this way. So. Obviously, we can't control you got, but if they have a road that's already done and. Set aside and ready to come, that's. Pretty much where you got to come down.
You don't don't care about tearing down houses?
Hmm. This, we, let's just say we're go, we're doing what you got tasks to do. About that. I again, I can't say, yep, you got guaranteed it, but we have met with them three different times on the West Bridge project. And said, look, we will, we will put a two hundred foot corridor for you guys through the project. Work on the wetlands, work on everything for you. And make it really easy for you to come this way. Again, Brett's right. We can't control where you dot says. We can do everything they ask us to, and then. You know, it's two hundred feet foot corridor, that pretty likely they're gonna come that way. But this also is very close to line with what they have asked for anyway. They've had nothing to do with us, so. Um, but then with the M and T zone coming here with twenty-five hundred new jobs coming into the M and T zone. The best thing we could do, in my opinion, is put next to twenty-five hundred jobs. Better housing. And that's what I'm proposing here is doing some better housing. Um. And that would be towns and. Some uh. Patio homes and then some up to up to third acre lots, kind of mixture of. Of, of all lots. Style.
So back to your comment on the Twelfth Street quarter, and I I really don't get where that's coming from for. Revamping the Twelfth Street quarter, cuz I looked at the general plan, and I thought we put a lot of discussion and thought into. This whole corridor, especially to the east. Of how that's going to develop. I mean, I see a bunch of orange, I see a bunch of red, I see a bunch of. And all those relate to what? Mixed use, commercial vehicle oriented, commercial. So I I guess I struggle with. The commissioners wanting to revamp that whole section when I think it's there. What needs to go through that corridor? In my opinion.
So you're saying you gotta look at mixed use in there?
There is.
Oh, no, I'm just saying.
You mean further west?
For what he's asking for now instead of R three.
And I I would struggle with even mixed use cuz if you look across. I mean, we, that that's a lot of area out there. You know, we we've seen West Bridge's proposal and and what could potentially come from that. I mean, basically, a whole new city is gonna be created out there. With the fourteen thousand units to potentially come. So. Just my thoughts.
Well. Here's my struggle. With it a little bit. We sat in a meeting and and we had one person, one commissioner on the fence until he was. Heard enough information to. Potentially change his mind. In an area that's already, and and another commissioner that was very concerned about changing the general plan in that area until. That commissioner learned how it was already zoned. Now we're going out into an area here where there's. Literally nothing, and this other subdivision, it was JDC. And. That's already been approved for high density, or you know, relatively high density, for what we're familiar with. And and now they, you know, they're going out here and and I'm not for it or against it. I'm just kinda in my mind trying to weigh. What the commission's thinking here because. There were a lot of concerns in that meeting about, about what was gonna happen there. With the potential of some higher density, couple two hundred and fifty or plus or minus additional front doors. Now we're coming out here and we're we're laying this down. In an area that we know is a big battleground for. So I'm a little confused, I guess.
You're saying it might be premature.
Well. Y- yeah, I'm not saying I'm against it, but is it premature or is I, are we getting some mixed signals from the commission is what I'm kinda thinking.
Yeah, the meeting we had Monday totally.
It's contradictory to what this is in my mind. And so I'm I'm kinda trying to wrap my head around it a little bit, you know? I I'm not, like I said, I'm not passing a judgment on this. But I'm just kinda. Wondering. If there's something more. To what they're thinking here.
So what would be the reason up changing? I mean, the thing of it is, is if we don't change it, then that yellow area up there is big lots, right?
Basically, third acre, fifteen thousand square foot. Potentially, I guess.
Potentially.
Right now, you got acre density.
And and we hear how successful that is with the trucking companies. A third acres, plenty basic, but almost two acres, not much. But I guess in the end of this thing. I would be willing to say in forty years. The west side or the south side of tracks and the north side of tracks, you're gonna, it's just, they're gonna look the same. So in in my mind, I guess that I I struggle a little bit with it, but what I struggle with is the timeframe. Hell, man, I'm eighty years old. I wanna see something. Probably won't. But I I just thinking that in my mind that. It's gonna be completely different when we get there than what we think it is today. I just think it's gonna be that way. Now, if we wanna have the third acres. So I guess we could put a fence up on the road, make them put a pool in a clubhouse and have a country club. Or what we can do is have. Lots of homes that will feed the employees in the Black Pine project. And that's sort of what where my mind is with this. The the fourteen thousand houses on the south side tracks. I don't know, was there ever a timeframe on that?
Yeah, who who knows the timeframe on any of it? I mean, it's a great.
Correct. But what I'm saying is, is in my mind, it takes. Maybe less expensive infrastructure on the north side of that than a will on the south side. So that's kind of where I'm at. I'm not making a judgment other than I think that in the end, it'll all look the same.
My only comment to that, and I I I agree, I mean, I appreciate your comments, but. When Black Pine presented this and you read through the documents on Black Pine, those are sixty to eighty thousand dollar a year jobs. How do we make this obtainable? Just goes back to like Andrew said, the meeting we had Monday.
Right.
You know, how do we, how do you get those? Because right now, based on the information that, I can't remember. Was it the information they gave us Monday or Tuesday meeting? I can't remember last week. But that dollar amount to what you've gotta bring in to afford something in here. Just cuz it's a townhome doesn't mean it's obtainable. Attainable. That A word, you know, I couldn't remember.
It does mean it's more.
It's probably more so, yes.
Yeah.
So I I guess if I'm hearing what you're saying that this is uh. The guys over in Black Pine Project can't afford to live there, then who's gonna live there?
You gotta have two people working. That's just so.
It's actually three people now, you know, I've read. Each person has to work about twelve and a half hours a day. And to me, I don't. I I guess in my mind is, is.
There you go.
It may never be insurable, but.
Charlie, you're off.
This is, I don't believe that we can. Not better run at this one place or another, because I think we're gonna learn how this works. I mean, we come up a thousand reasons not to do it. And I, I don't even know. I'm thinking, at least on paper, we can come up with one reason to. Make a run out of it, but now how successful that is, I don't know.
But it's just like anything out in this area, you're challenged. Are the growth and this higher density is outgrowing what are utilities and and what can service us?
That's correct.
And then it comes into a huge cost, just like in in our chair vice chair meeting.
With Stephanie the other day. I mean, now it's everything they wanna propose PIDs and everything else because your infrastructure costs are so high to get it here. What'd she tell us the infrastructure costs on here? I thought it was a hundred and ten, but she told us an even bigger number.
Yeah.
Hundred and, what was the number? What's the infrastructure on Black Pine?
Oh, uh, you know.
Like a hundred and twenty something million dollars. The infrastructure for this.
Yeah.
So.
When, when are they proposing to start that?
Yes.
I haven't heard anything.
I I think they, I think until inland port. It's decided on, I don't think they even know.
We've got people calling through your routine room, but for whatever reason, no, it's an application, so we'll see.
And then how long is a rezone good for?
Uh, it'll go indefinite unless we have an expiration on the rezone. So it'll stay purple on the map for. A while. I don't know what we, actually, I think we did an expiration. I think we put thirty years on this one.
Yeah, I think it's a development agreement.
There's, yeah.
On Black Pine.
Do they have power?
I think that's one of their.
So they have will so.
For power?
Yes.
I don't, I I know in the conversation, that's where. The whole solar deal come from is cuz of some power issues out in the area. Potentially, the solar deal that. They wanted to take all of our approval out of.
They need one of those small nuclear reactors. What what's our, what's our code for one of those? One of those small nuclear plants, since they feel. They have them now. They're they're relatively small. They can put them up, tear them down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we can put them where we grow the marijuana.
Well, you already ran one off. Anything else on this one?
I guess I don't know how to take it in a way, but. The success of the meeting we have about Christians and property. Maybe this one actually falls in the same category. Maybe this one actually falls in the same category. Sit down and chat and find out really where they're at with those.
I, I'd like to have the decision from the inland port authority, which I think is coming up this week or next week.
Monday.
You asked for R three.
Yeah, we've got a, what is it, open house or discussion room, something like that. There we go, listening session. It's one of those fancy words tomorrow night or Thursday.
And, and they actually make the decision next Monday.
Monday.
Oh, it'll be all over the news. It's already in the news.
What's a listening session?
What's a listening session? I asked the same question, cause I was really interested on what a listening session was and. The, what I got told is you have one minute to come up and ask a question and there's a panel that you'll ask a question to. And they have three minutes to respond or a three minute response?
Nobody gave me a timeframe.
Oh, that's a bad idea.
And that's here.
Yes.
Stephanie seemed to have. Huh?
Three minutes to ask the question, three minutes for the.
One minute to ask, three minutes.
Okay.
Is, is what Stephanie told us Monday the other day.
I guess so.
The decision's made completely. So that's coming quick.
So I gave you some direction, Pat?
No, not really.
Well, first of all. I'll throw. I got a couple of comments, I think the people. That you're asking to change, they gotta be here too. I think it is a little bit premature because there's no. J D C had, I mean, they're committed. And it's a little bit easier to see black and white then. And uh, I don't know if we put. If you could put an R three there. Really haven't got. Much control of what does go there except for what R three. Provides at that time. Where J D C, they didn't overask, I don't feel. Well, I think that's because we had them. Pretty much whittled down to what they had and then state gave a real good concept of what it should be. I, I like it, but. And I do feel like this is a little bit. Kind of premature, not wrong. I think everybody that's gonna be involved. Seems already, already have a general plan. They are, there's space with this too.
Everybody is involved with what?
Well, I thought you wanted this changed and.
You're talking several properties here.
Just, just these right here and our. I've already talked about the owners, everybody's involved.
But I, I think. I mean, if it's gonna come through, I mean, the application needs to show everything that it is. Unless, unless we're just talking on this particular property that's hedged, hatched up. If, if you wanna, you know, make a general plan amendment on all those properties, then. Go through the process. With the. Property owners and all of the, there's supposed to be letters of. That gives whatever those letters are and everything else.
We actually don't have the protocol for changing the general plan. It's not written in the code.
Really?
Yeah.
That's just on redo.
But uh, there's a. I mean, I think it's unwritten. Uh, we do have a adopted application process.
So I could come in and propose a general plan amendment on anybody's property.
Dang, that's good, didn't it? Let's change this over here on a bunch of it.
Yeah, yeah. As the planning commission, you can propose rezoning anybody's property as well.
Just like we can tear down people's houses and put roads through it, can we draw lines on maps?
Yep. Uh, one thing I mentioned to Pat uh, in this discussion is uh. If it's just a single parcel, I mean, we're gonna have to have a pretty serious conversation about why it's just a single piece of property that we're talking about. Uh, why isn't what's across the street right for this, for the change as well? Uh, cause you wanna have similar types of uses, you know, together. Unless there's a really good reason, maybe the really good reason is there's a highway splitting the difference. But uh, when I look at the map here and I think about. Hard to see.
Bottle White.
Think about uh, Vaughn, Vaughn White. Just single family residences. Right next to what they have over there. Uh, we, we put these red buffers around the um. Manufacturing area here because there could be mixed use housing and commercial to try and buffer what they're doing. From what's here next door, but if the mixed use kinds of uses were. Spread over or maybe it's a office types of uses or. I just don't know that single family residential is the right spot there. If you have the reasons coming through the process right now. Which is single family R one fifteen. Go all the way through and get planted and then that, that deal's done for, you know, as long as those houses stay. Uh, so making changes after that is gonna be a little hard to do. I mean, you can make changes, it's just gonna be hard to see the change actually come in fruition.
So, so is that what the commission's thinking is because of its. Relative location to a potential, you know, highway there that, that's why they wanna see this because. A- another example besides J D C just came to my mind and it was. The item that we had our public hearing on, that was Navy medals. I mean, they didn't like that.
They were adamant that that.
So it's like, how, you know, that's where I'm confused. And, and, and okay, so, so I can buy in if, if it's because of its location. Okay. I, but I, I'm confused as to how we. How they're thinking about this, that's all.
Well, and I did bring that up to them, I knew they, I literally came to them the day after they denied J D C rampages. And they said, and that's what we talked about was with the M and T zone coming in, that changed. Brand new jobs coming in and with the highway coming into that area right there. That's what, that's why our discussions were. That's why I printed this up because this isn't just R one fifteen. Right there, it's M and T zone now.
None of it is. None of it's, none of it's really relevant, relevant for our, our one fifteen. As far as I'm concerned. There's, there, there should be mixed uses in all of this. Maybe not all of it, but, but in, in a significant amount. But, but the point is, is that that's kinda, it's the, the message that, that we're getting is a little bit mixed. You know, because. Because of a couple of these items that have come up recently, so it's like, okay. You know, where we, where do we really wanna go with this? So.
I'd like another work session.
Yeah, with the commission?
Yeah, because this is completely contrary to. The direction. That they've been leaning towards, so.
Well, I don't, I don't wanna uh. Get this thing built up to where it's, where, where we're okay with it and then have you go to the commission and they're, they're asking you, you know. Well, help me understand this, you know? It's just, this is a little bit shocking because of.
Well, Pat's been already done that, didn't you say?
That's why I went to the commission.
Yeah.
I made sure that this was.
Did you meet with them all individually? Cause it wasn't in a work session.
All three individuals. Yeah, that's kinda where I'm having a hard time is cause in a work session, they've told us specifically, they don't wanna see anymore R three.
Yeah.
And, and then. Told you that, and so that's kinda where. I don't know, might be good for you to have a work session with them, with all three of them there. To talk about it because they've. Told us in work sessions, they don't wanna see our.
And, and that's, and so if you're looking for advice and thanks, Rick, and I don't mean to cut you off, but I, I, I agree a hundred percent with that because that's. The vibe that you've got is not the same vibe that we've got.
Yeah, that's where I'm kind of. And that was just recently that they've told us that.
Yeah.
And so that's kinda where, you know, we're going off of what they've mentioned and then. We see this and it's like, well, wait, that's going contrary to what they told us.
Well, and I think kinda that Andrew's point, I mean, it's the same thing. We thought Navy was. Pretty slam dunk. It made sense. It was a budding, it was, I mean, this one here is gonna be a complete island of R three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't even have anything that touches it around and. I, yeah.
Yeah, the R three were on Navy, really, you could throw a rock and hit R three from there. Or like R three, and so it's like, you know. Uh, that's where my concern is. I, I, I'm, I'm not against this, don't take me wrong for a second. I just, I'm confused by what the message that the commission's putting out, that's all.
And on a personal note, I might have a little bit of a timing issue with this because we don't have that road. Or that freeway or whatever we call that. The corridor tied down by U dot. And if we did. If that was tied down and then we have the development to the east of their tie down. My mind, that makes sense for that to be R three or some type of mixed use even. In that area, but.
Is there a timeline that they need to say where that. Corridor is gonna be or are they just gonna wait till they?
They've changed their.
Till they bring the road.
Till they do an environmental assessment?
Yeah.
On that, there's.
That was a recommendation we had, yes.
Our.
Yeah.
Right.
But right now they're moving, they're closer to getting an environmental assessment study done than they previously were, it's.
But not to come this far north. Are they?
No. It, it would just end at twelfth. And that, it wouldn't go all the way.
But at least that would give us an idea. I mean, at least, I mean, if they're gonna tie this up. I thought EA was only going to four thousand.
Uh, well, that's probably true, uh, that they're so, they have funded, I do believe that alignment to four thousand. Um, but we're looking at, working with them to. We're actually hoping we can get some U dot dollars and use some county economic doll, dollars. To run the exact same environmental process with the exact same consultants that they would have otherwise used. To see what the consultants would say. If we went through the federal process, cause. Even if we did go through the federal process, the big glaring issue is we don't have a ton of traffic out there right now. And so they're gonna say, no. Don't disrupt any of this land, stick forty seven hundred west. And that's what you guys have been telling us so far. So till we get a good reason. Meaning a lot more trucks and a lot more vehicles. Um, we don't wanna ask for an environmental, cause we'll get an answer that we don't want.
But. If someone like Pat's gonna develop over here on this side of the tracks. And needs to know and starts putting in some infrastructure over here, that does create a path. That U dot could potentially take advantage of going down the road, which is essentially what you're proposing. By leaving the, the two hundred feet. And so all of that makes sense. It's just, who's gonna stand behind him? And, and that's where I'm a little confused at the moment.
One of the reasons why uh, they had to deviate on the West Davis corridor. In one location is because the city had set aside that freeway alignment, but labeled it on a map in the park. And park consideration, public space consideration, uh, set aside is something specific that the federal. Uh, process looks at and says, well, there's supposed to be a community park here, you can't run a freeway through there.
And then they tore down a bunch of houses to move. Some that were a year old.
Well, for me, it wasn't. Like I'm not. That the Dexter corridor is definitely a reason to do this, but the M and T zone is the most important reason. That's already been purchased. They closed on it, they own it. They're in the process of working on it, the pit's been approved. Been working on the sewer. I mean, it's, that's going to happen. And just for twenty five hundred new jobs coming in, this is what needs to be next to the M and T zone. This is the closest. We can possibly view for obtainable homes. And as far as like what you're saying, Jed, it's. I mean, I can rezone this into a development agreement with you guys and then it's locked in what I can do here and I'm willing to. Work with you guys, be creative and make it exactly how you want it to look. If this is right here, the most affordable property on the module. And that's what I'm trying to build. Is. The least expensive homes that we can, that's what this, that's what I'm proposing. Is.
Most taken.
Most, thank you. I knew there was a nice. And. I, I mean, honestly, if. If, if. You guys don't want me to do this, I'm more than willing to do the R, R one fifteen and come in and do. Another stagecoach right here. That still pencils for me. I personally do not think it's the best use for this. I do not think that's what needs to go here. But I will do it if that's what the planning commission recommends. I won't even try to fight you guys. I won't. I'll do whatever you guys want me to do because it still pencils for me. That's what the master plan calls for. I'm willing to do that. This honestly is what I think needs to go there.
My. I mean, you have every right to bring it through the process. And, and put it to a public hearing and. And. You know. We can make a decision at that point. I mean, the, the general plan was a. Pretty hefty public hearing process and. That's what come out and that's what the map's up on there and. So. I, I think, I mean, it's, it's, you've got the application in for the general plan amendment. I mean, we've kinda stated how our feelings are and where we are with it and. I think two things I think I'd recommend from this is one. I would sit down in an actual work session like Director Grover stated with all three commissioners. And. Get a vibe, I would even. I, I wouldn't be opposed to just like we did last Monday. Invite the planning commission. We had every planning commission member in that meeting and we all, we all weighed in on it.
Yeah, and you'll, and you'll, and you'll at least get enough there to, you'll have a good idea of what's going on with the planning commission too.
So I, I think that I, I strongly recommend that that. I think that's the next move with this, unless you wanna just continue through the process, but I, I think that's. I, I think that's the best. Discussion, cause.
I think, I think it'll be. The. Less frictionless, most frictionless way of program.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea.
Doing third's a good day to have a meeting.
We, we, we have lost here the same thing.
Can I have one, sir?
Harvey's have a town. They might have one.
You guys okay if I bring you a warrant?
Yeah, you got two items, so now we gotta go to your next item.
So. This is. Uh, Longhorn. We're ready to go on that one. I've also put in a contract. By the piece to the east. So I've met with the. The Parks Department. And this was not my suggestion, this is from the Parks Department, by the way. As of last night. I was. Proposing.
This is Longhorn?
Yes.
Liam, can we even discuss that? Cause it's not on our agenda.
What is the item listed as?
The item's listed as West Creek.
Well. We should list it as an item for the next work session.
Sorry. I thought you was on here talking about West Creek until I heard Longhorn. And it took my mind a second to generate those. You'll have to be, you know, if we. We really shouldn't.
Yeah.
Sorry. We can talk about West Creek. You got anything you wanna talk about West Creek, but yeah, where it's not on. The agenda, I don't. Alright. Wanna talk about West Creek? No. Yeah, West Creek.
That is West Creek.
Anything else you wanna talk about that one? Cause it was, it was listed as the general plan. Amendment to the future land use map. Was one discussion. Our second discussion was. Regarding West Creek.
And that's the same West Creek is.
And we wasn't sure because there was. An application for a work session on this, but then there was also the application for the general plan amendment, so they both came to get you a work session.
Gotcha.
That's why they were listed separately in two different items, but. But yeah. We got, if you wanna talk Longhorn, we'll have to put it on our next agenda.
Okay, well, let me talk more West Creek.
Okay.
And I'll show you how. Why this.
I don't know why they like this to be in the dark. Hey, we got lights again.
So if you guys look, this right here. Is right over here.
Well, maybe.
So if you look. Right here, this is the minus piece. So this obviously isn't to scale, but. Midas's piece, which is this piece right here touches. This road, this is sixty seven hundred right here, that's sixty seven hundred. So you guys can kinda see how this all ties in together. So it might not look like it, but I spent hours and hours and hours and hours on this, like a ridiculous amount of time. So basically from seventy one hundred. So basically, from seventy one hundred over to Black Pine, I control a whole corridor going all the way through. And what I'm trying to. Is get the sewer, so the sewer. The Weir County plan that this, Weir County put together, and for the lift station for Black Pine, everything, it's gonna be bringing gravity. Fed line clear up to here. Obviously, they need somebody to put that in, that would be me. So I'm working on getting this approved through this corridor here. What I wanna do is, this is a secondary pond here, I'm working with Black Pine, the uh. Let me discuss this, oh my goodness, the uh. Looked at on this, the Peterson Group, Black Pine and Peterson Group and me. Uh, I'm actually taking the piece over from the Peterson Group, that sixty acres right there. What I wanna do is put in a secondary water system that ties into the. The Black Pine's water system here, they've got three different types of secondary water shares, I have. One type of secondary water shares, I wanna put in a. Secondary water line that ties in with that pond, and ties this pond together, and create a secondary water system for south of. Or west of the river. With the water shares I have, Black Pine have, and Peterson's have, is. More, well more than double than what we need, and so we could create a Hooper irrigation on the west side of the river. That's a lot, but not Hooper irrigation. That's a lot of discussion broke down into forty eight seconds.
So did you actually just talk about this? By talking about disappearing?
I did not, I'm talking about. Not at all. This has to do with parks. So I haven't mentioned parks up here. Anyway, I did wanna. This is a parks idea, this was their idea, but I can't talk about that.
All right, anything else on West Creek?
Any other questions about what I just said? That was a lot of stuff I just threw at you guys, if you know what that.
Secondary waters needed out there.
Well, it is.
That's a hiccup we have in a lot of areas, secondary water and sewer.
Where does that water come from? From these guys.
From Warner Dation, from, they had a, basically. The, yeah, the shares. And then.
I will continue on it. You're good.
This is potentially secondary water for West Creek.
Yes.
It is secondary water for West Creek.
But that's gonna come from uh, what? I wouldn't say the wave farm.
The night.
Use that water.
Yes. Yeah, and there's three different types of water shares over there. We wanna feed all that into that pond, and then feed into this pond, and tie the two connections together, so we have.
A loop.
A loop, yep.
Cool.
Well, yeah, we talked about that other one all day. I should, you guys would be very interested to hear what I have to say, but.
Hey, legal's legal. I get myself, myself in enough trouble, I don't need any help. All right, if nothing else, then. JDC's off the agenda? That's it.
Well, this is actually top JDC, let me talk about.
Okay, thanks you guys, thanks, Pat. Okay.
Now, the rodeo was in Fremont, I can make it. Well, Jane and his brother and.